Okay, let's move right on with the first one. Petition number 909. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 4th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the town hall. Halifax, Town Hall 499, Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the application by Mark and Kathleen Mitchell for a special permit for an existing in-law apartment located at 332 River Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Mark and Kathleen Mitchell of 332 River Street, Halifax, Mass. 02338. As shown on assessment map number 1 on 1, Lot 12A. Title reference book 4645, Page 1. The applicants are seeking a new special permit for their pre-existing in-law apartment for use in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under Section 167-7D12. Area is Zoned Residential, petition number 909. Uh, Mark and Kathleen?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are. Okay, you've filled out the form here. There are no changes, no additions, no petitions, no entry exits, no changes in the property since the previous one. Any questions from members of the board?
Is it still media family that lives on?
I don't know.
Okay, any other questions or anything? All right, I'll entertain a motion regarding petition number 909.
I'm going to motion to accept petition number 909 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to accept petition 909 as presented and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good to go. Pass this 500. Dan is alternate. You all good on it? You all good? You all good?
Yes.
Uh, the Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 7th, 2019 at 7:30 PM. Meeting room number 1 of the town hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax. On the application by David Aroda hyphen uh slash Skoll, Contracting Company, to build an addition for an in-law apartment to be located at 292 Thompson Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Maurice Issa and Myrna Habee. Uh, 292 Thompson Street, Halifax, Mass. 02338, as shown on assessment map number 89, Lot 1 dash C. Title reference book 36989, Page 311. The applicant is seeking a special permit in variance to construct a 24 by 36 addition in a 16 by 18 sunroom. As this addition will be 1,152 square feet, lies more than 50% of the first floor living space of remaining residence. The applicant is also seeking a variance to weight loss requirement for an in-law apartment in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under Schedule of Use Regulations, Section 167-7D12. Area is Zoned Agriculture Residential, petition number 902. Hi.
Hi.
We met with you last month, correct?
Yes.
And how did we make out?
So, um, since this far footage is going to be considered...
I'm sorry, could you state your name and your address?
Oh, Myrna Habee.
Okay.
So, since this far footage has been considered part of the living space, I've been talking with the engineers who are configuring it. That's why I stayed in so long, so I just spent a little bit more time.
That's fine.
Um, but yeah, so we're trying to accommodate the six foot opening. And if you remember where the sunroom is, that's going to be like a great room for a lot of them.
Okay.
So, I'm just trying to figure, going back and forth, because we can go in and engineer what we like best.
All right, uh, the only thing we would need is a letter, just to hand it and note for you.
Actually, yeah. An extension.
Oh, we have an extension.
I have a question. Would you support the next meeting next month and then break January or February, December?
It's the next one.
Okay. January or...
Oh, go ahead.
All right, so I'll see you this number.
Work.
Hopefully they'll have everything if I don't, because I want to go to Florida, so it's testing approved by her to go by my report. And we don't expect to break ground, we'll spring out anyway. So, is a problem if it goes to January?
Uh, what did you put down on June 68?
Whatever, yep, 60 days you'd rather.
What do we, uh, what do we have so far?
Well, she had signed an extension last month.
Sorry, the third?
Her third. Um, they originally planned it by test, so she said.
Oh.
Just to do it.
That'll take us to July?
Well, she needs to do another.
Okay, that'll be fine if you could just submit that.
And then I'll see you back there?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, um, sorry, this way, sir. When would the 60 days be up? How far does that get? What actual days are 60 days?
What is the actual days?
It's around eight, application.
I had to head from, and then the second month.
September.
Yes, and we have, you guys advise us what to do. I have to postpone or early lock them out.
So, we can change in September. She signed the 30th extension in October to today, basically. And so, this will be 60 extension, right?
So, we might, we might want to deny you, just because they're meeting in January 13th.
Okay.
Whatever, it's on this one.
Yeah, because they said spring year.
We're not going to wear jackets for it. And I'm pretty confident next time, like, we know what we need, so watch, just be cautious.
Thanks, Joe.
Well, because we're meeting on Thursday this month, but in January, you'll be meeting on the second Monday, so.
Thank you.
What was the December what? What was the December what? You just continued to? Or it's going to be?
Mine is, but September mine is in this meeting, but she wants to wait till January.
Oh, she may really not.
Um, I don't know, and I spoke to him today. I think it's probably better until January. It's hard getting in touch with these people now.
I knew things to January, so that'll be.
Oh, good. All right, let's do that. January 13th meeting.
Something else to then repeat where.
Oh.
For a second.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Oh, yes, I, uh, I'll need a, uh, motion regarding petition number 902 to continue it with the endorsement application to extend, uh, the waiting period to the January 13th meeting. So, we need a motion to continue it till January 13th.
I'll make a motion to continue petition 902 until the December 9th meeting.
No.
June, January, or January 13th meeting?
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, a motion on the floor, uh, to accept, uh, the continuance of petition number 902 till January 13th meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Petition number 905. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 7th, 2019 at 7:05 PM in meeting room number 1 of the town hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax. On the application by Daniel and Karen Goom to reconstruct a garage to be located at 33 Boch Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Daniel and Karen Goom of 33 Boch Street, Halifax, Mass. 02338, as shown on assessment map 19, Lot 92928. Title reference book 23230, Page 85. The applicant's project is in violation and constitutes a continuation of a non-conforming use 167-8A, alteration 167-8B, and extension of a non-conforming use 167-8C, as well as in violation of the setback requirements 167-dash-11. The applicants are therefore seeking a special permit to change from two existing accessory buildings into one principal detached building garage in variances from 167-12F1. Front setback from 50 feet to 32 feet. Two rear setbacks from 40 feet to 21 feet. And three left side setback from 30 feet to one foot. A variance in accordance with 167-12E8. As a deviation from 167-12E7, second and third sentences quote, "An accessory building or structure shall remain freestanding in perpetuity. Said accessory building or structure shall not by means of additional construction be attached to another building or to an existing building." Area is Zoned Residential Business Conservancy, petition 905. Hi, Mr. James Goom, how are you?
Good.
Okay, the board at our last meeting, uh, decided that we were going over to a site inspection, which was conducted, uh, this past Saturday at 9:00 AM on, uh, at the residence of Boch Street. Uh, comments or questions from the men for the board? I, uh, spoke with the building inspector and asked him if he could go through the records to find the building permit for the original, uh, shed. And it was none on file. Uh, so there is no building permit. Uh, and what about the building permit now for the new construction?
There is no, there is no permit for the new.
As we're trying to get.
Uh, I'd like to ask the building inspector, Rob, how are you? Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, yeah, we went up Saturday and took a look at it. As far as, uh, an accessory structure goes, uh, by definition, how does a second story fit into this? As a shed?
Second story, well, I think it's, it exceeds an accessory structure. It's basically a garage. Exceeds 300 square feet. So, I don't believe you've got any, any bylaws as far as stories of accessory structures.
Well, is it, is it a garage or is it not?
Well, I was confused.
So, anyway.
I have to look at accessory structures where I agree it would be up to 300 square feet. And I think over that, we have such a definition for garage and barns, in which a bylaw will act 800 in force.
What you said, the square foot was in capital S.
Uh, yeah. Six forty by something.
What was the dimension of that?
16 by, oh, thirty and a half.
That's about 640, 640 square feet.
So, as far as, uh, the board, as far as the previous structures, I don't know what size they were originally started when they were built. Um, based on the building code, if they were less than 200 square feet or less, they would not have been required with a permit, but they would have maintained, if needed, maintenance setbacks that would have been required for, for accessory structure.
And the original one, Rob, I'm mistaken, was what, like a foot and a half on the butt of the property?
Again, I don't know, we don't have anything showing clearly definitive of where the original one would be put. Uh, if there was a site plan showing where it was.
Right.
Yeah, and engineering.
So, what are we going to call this?
By definition, now, it's, it's going to be a garage blind structure, but if there's a garage door on it themselves, it might be because it's a garage.
Yeah. What's the requirements as far as the square footage of garage slash barn information is to me?
We can't go over 800, we have to shoot.
Well, gentlemen, when all looked at it Saturday, what's the pleasure of the board?
We're, you know, variance, we have to justify.
I'm sorry?
Variance, we have to justify the variance.
Right.
Right, so just, that's just the point that I'm dealing with, my head over this, like a one foot.
Feel free to answer questions, please.
To the structure. Uh, well, this is considered a new structure?
It would be considered a new structure. I mean, like I said, there were two, supposedly there were two sheds there. And from what I pursued, now they're combined into one, I would call them a structure. I, no, I haven't even gotten into the building yet, we're trying to square the zoning. Um, but it looked like it was two smaller sheds that combined into a whole lot of structure.
Now, do you think that that could be better positioned on the lot for the setbacks?
From what I could see, it wasn't positioned off on his, there was a section that needed to be removed to make it conform to the one foot.
But could we do better than one foot is overmasking, in your opinion?
Uh, and you can always do better, depending on what the board feels. But structurally, what you don't have to do.
Well, I think the new structure here, new section, is off your problem, right? The new section and the old building is what's, that old small issue is what's on your problem.
The corner was.
Right, I think the corner of the new section is at the one foot, on the problem. But they're asking for variance, which we have to be able to justify.
That's correct in criteria for the variance.
Well, there has to be hardship shown. And, you know, for that positioning, you would have to be a topography reason, condition of the soil, uh, you know, the grade of the land. And it looked like to me, first of all, I'm jealous, what a great lot, what a great place. But, you know, I paced off over to the pool like 40, 45 feet.
Square foot under any block?
Yes.
So, you know, we've gotten in trouble in the past in not, not being able to justify variances, so.
All right, so, uh, the first, uh, first element of the variance could be to show hardship.
A hardship.
Now, that's not self-fulfilling. Correct. Mr. Goom, the board needs to know, I guess, your decision to place or to leave the garage slash blind structure, uh, where it is. In non-compliance, there's no other place you could move this to that you could comply with setbacks and whatnot. There's, we're looking for a reason or a hardship why you chose that particular spot.
Well, like I said, 25 years ago, I had a shed at the end of my driveway. They said it was like putting that in the middle of Route 58. So, at that point, they told me where to place the first shed.
Who told you to?
The neighbors. Go back and, um, you know, 25 years ago, which was?
But I've gone to do something.
Must have do something, was it there? Long story short, so we placed that there. And everything around the property was based around that. You know, when we built, when we built the other shed, it was, it was based on that.
Which was the original shed, the little one or the bigger one?
The little one was the...
The one that's over the line?
Correct. All the way to the right.
We're not taking issue with that. The only issue I'm seeing is, it's, that's why I asked the building inspector, it's a new structure.
Mm-hmm.
Those two other structures.
Correct.
Don't matter in this case.
Right.
So, that's where we're at, is there's a new structure being placed one foot from a boundary where it's required to be 30 feet, step front.
Again, I'm not sure if it's a corridor or not. The street was through it, right?
Yeah, the paper road from the 18.
If it's a garage, I mean, I should have to maintain 50 feet for the outside.
So, so we're looking at it as a new structure, one foot from a, from a boundary.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't need to be that close. That's, that's the only issue that I see.
Right.
You have five or something. 20 something feet in the back, you know, that's, you know, I can see that coming in and out. I can see you can't put it in any place else. That way, I think personally for me, I can't speak for everybody else, but I think you're good that on that setback, it's that one foot that is a concern.
I mean, if I was to go 30 feet to the left, I would be touching my butters garage.
But there were 11 lots on the road.
No, I have the 11 lots, but I mean...
But heading over towards the pool?
Correct. Well, I mean, if, where it is now, if I moved that, say, um, directly to the left, it would be, it would be touching their garage, which is about seven feet off my property line.
I don't see that. You're talking about the opposite direction from the pool. The pool is off to the left, as you're standing in the...
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying, looking directly at the shed right now. If I moved that 30 feet to the left.
Right.
I would be touching their garage from...
Trinity Road.
Trinity Road, yeah.
I don't see that.
I don't remember seeing another structure that close.
Oh, yeah.
Because you have 20 feet in the back. If you paralleled your back.
I'm saying if I went 30 feet to the left, is what...
Well, what if you packed that, the 21 feet setback you had to that back walk line? I don't know if you can call that back walk line.
Right.
You paralleled that and came over, told you pool, you're maintaining the 21 feet or whatever it was, 20 something feet in the back, but you're greatly decreasing that one foot.
Oh, the one foot, yeah, the one foot offset, then my name is up.
That's what we're concerned about.
Right. But what I'm saying is, is if I moved that 30 feet to the left, I would be in their, their, their garage. They're seven feet off the...
Do you have a question? What do we have in the, this coffee? Some difficult, yeah. What's that?
Can I ask you a question? Are, are, do you normally build buildings like that?
Excuse me?
Like, have you had experience building sheds or garages like that in the past? It seems like you've got to know what you're doing. Are you building by yourself?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
That's what I do for a...
Okay. So, I guess the concern that I have, I have two. The first one is, um, it's surprising that someone who would be kind of knowledgeable about building buildings of that size would show a check for building permit and look at all this stuff first. So, we're kind of in this position, I'm surprised that we didn't have that conversation before it was built. Um, and the second concern that I had driving in was, um, that, that when finished, will be bigger than some of the houses in the neighborhood. So, I don't know. It's, and specifically, the reason I say that specifically in the bylaws is that if we vary the, the garage or accessory structure requirements, we should take height and size into account when we do that. So, I, I wish we had had this conversation before it was built, so we could modify it. Um, and I would feel better about it, but most importantly, I, I'm surprised that we didn't. Um, but I also think the size of it is, might, an argument could be made that it's not in line with the, the neighborhood. So, uh, those are my two concerns going in. So, hopefully, you can kind of speak to that or someone else can speak to that, but those are my big concerns going in. And I do, I do wonder, you probably know better than me, because there's all those lots, the way the, the land is situated, but there is, there is a question on the hardship of the topography of the land. I noticed that it dips down, but I don't know, like, there seems to be enough room on the lot that you have to put the shed somewhere else so that it wouldn't beat the, the side in front and that.
We have a lot, a lot of issues.
Okay.
In that.
Okay.
Um, and, and I mean, I have complained, the water literally pours down Boch Street into our, like, a waterfall sometimes, but, and so it, it gets very, very wet down at times. So, um...
Is it the whole property or there's certain areas that...
Where the lowest point, where, yeah, and where the lowest point, right.
Yeah, and it does kind of dip down. So, is there a reason that...
Yeah.
Was there a reason you couldn't put it somewhere else? I mean, I know the pool is there, yeah, like, that's the, like, there's kind of other stuff there. So, I just don't know if you, if you thought about that or if that came into play when you were looking at more.
Basically, we were just replacing what was, what was there, because the tree damaged the roof.
Yeah.
We had all the trees cut, we hired someone to cut down all the trees in the back there. And it was basically to try and save the stuff that we have, and you saw the inside of the shed, it was ruined. Um, so it's basically just to replace what was there, so.
Uh, I guess, uh, I'd just ask to be a little, a little more detailed view as far as, you know, finishing with the established character of the neighborhood. You said you had a problem with that bit.
Well, it definitely seems like when it's finished, and obviously it's not finished, but when it's finished, it will be arguably the same size as some of the houses in the neighborhood, if not bigger than some of the, the size of the houses in the neighborhood. So, I don't know if that's, it's a, it's a, it's a thing I notice.
And the, the third criteria, one of the other board members would like to address, third criteria is that it does not derogate from the, from the intent of the bylaw. Uh, I don't know, anybody else members who...
Specifically, um, specifically, one of my problems with this here is we have two existing sheds. And I know you feel that they were grandfathered in if you want, but unfortunately, when you build a building the way you're building it, that's not grandfathered anymore. It's just like, um, you're in construction, you have building codes. Building codes are updated every three or four years, and you have to build the new ones. Same thing on our bylaws. You know, we try to work with everyone in and make sure things go the way that everybody wants them to go, but you're tying our hands here. You really are. I mean, if you'd come to us beforehand, we'd have asked all these questions, saved you a lot of time, and you probably would have to build it the way you want it. But right now, we're looking at it, and our bylaws don't give us that, that freedom. And that's why we have a real problem, trying to come up with a way of making this work. It's difficult.
It's, uh, not really replacing the existing structure where that second floor is, is doubling the floor spaces, where there's no second floor on, on sheds that are existing now. Well, what's the pleasure of the board? Well, uh, what's the pleasure of the board? Well, just, just for purposes, now, I mean, was there a cease and desist deposition going on? Is that, is that our current status right now? What's the pleasure of the board? Do I have a motion regarding petition number nine oh five? Or are there any other questions? I mean, you've heard from your buddies, or you've been out on the site inspection, uh, that we should at least be able to conclude this, uh, application here? What do you want to do? I'd like to take a motion.
Well, I, I think if, if you, if you look at your property, look at the building you're trying to build, and reconfigure it, and then come back at another time, you may be able to do something with it. But I think the way it stands right now, I don't, I don't see how that, that can happen. Unfortunately.
Well, that would, uh, give you a choice. You, we can either go forward and vote on this tonight, or you can, uh, withdraw your application, uh, without prejudice, and resubmit another plan, so you don't have to wait a lengthy period of time, and, uh, come up with something else. I mean, I think you've got a pretty good idea of how the board feels, and, uh, that would basically be your choice now. You could either go ahead and vote tonight, or, like I said, you could withdraw without prejudice and, and resubmit. In the meantime, though, the cease and desist, the system, any further construction would, would maintain, and, uh, come back with some, something, uh, that you feel the board would be in favor of.
For the board's votes, I'm, I'm...
I think we're going to withdraw without prejudice, but, um, who do we get the suggestions from on how we can do this? That those...
Well, uh, to be honest with you, the board doesn't do that. You either, uh, draw the plans up yourself where he's a licensed contractor, or, uh, have another outside contractor draw it up for you, and, uh, and resubmit your application. What's the, uh, waiting period if it, uh, if it's voted on tonight and, uh, it gets turned down? It's one year or two years? I think it's two years. I'm sorry?
Just thinking about it. So, the board is looking for something that would be more amicable to deal with as far as, because I think no matter, based on what I saw with it, no matter what they're, they're going to do, it probably would have an advantage of some sort.
Or try to increase those...
So, so, we try and get a better-looking variance, or more space in between, something that's more conforming, because it's not conformal.
Yes, but if, if they move it to a point where it can already be more than that, then now we're talking about topography, and we can justify their...
I understand, I just want...
I mean, the truth is, if, if they were, if they were rebuilding, basically somebody was on the same footprint, same idea. It was just redone. I, I, we've worked with people like that.
And again, you know, they, they kind of shot themselves in the foot, and one, because they're making it harder for them, and more confusing, because now we've got that language of combined buildings and all, and all the other stuff.
In going out.
In going out, so, you know, in the rain, where you had it coming in that end before, then it would have been easier.
And there never was a...
For the board. Uh, I, I just don't want to see this go down the road, if, if, if it's going to be running into the same problem with any variances and things along those lines.
Yes, but certainly before that, though, they would be submitting a, a, a new proposal to the building inspector, so you could...
So, that we know what they know, when they're talking about moving the structure.
Right. If, if, if that's, do we have a special form for, uh, withdrawal? You can do that, or, uh...
I'll have fun trying to go today, huh?
Yes. Quick, bro. This is going to be, like, to come up and, and submit this. All right, so I'll, I'll need a, um, a motion in regards to petition number, uh, nine oh five, uh, to approve the request for, uh, uh, withdrawal without prejudice on petition number nine oh five.
I'll make a motion for petition nine oh five to accept the, uh, withdrawal without prejudice.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, the regular board members, aside, are you ready? Yes in favor or against? You have it?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. So, to accept the withdrawal of prejudice if it passes five zero zero, yes?
Mr. Chairman, do we have a timeframe or anything? As far as what needs to be done within a certain amount of time?
What's the menu petition?
It would be a new business. They withdrew their petition, so there isn't a time period.
Oh, I understand, but we've got a violation that goes on that's going on. It's, it's a possibility.
Would you, you are, you are...
We've got fines that are possibly involved if, if things don't happen right. I'm just wondering if there should be some guidance as far as the timeframe, so that something gets moved forward.
Okay, so, just going because of the violation, uh...
Cease and desist.
Meaning, it's why, cease and desist.
And there haven't been any fines issued to this, to this date like this.
And now that the application is withdrawn...
It's still in violation.
It's still in violation. How does the board feel? Thirty days, sixty days, ninety days?
Sixty days, if I'm not mistaken.
Sixty?
To come up with a new plan?
Yes.
Yes, that should be helpful.
Is that okay with you?
No, no further.
I'm sorry?
With no further construction, is there a...
Yes. Obviously, the cease and desist.
Yes, you know that, man.
All right.
So, sixty days for the plan.
Can I just present to the board?
So, uh...
When you continue with that sort of building, you have to, you have to move it, because you have to submit a new petition.
So, since they withdrew the application, rather, you can't make a motion on something. We don't have an application or anything, so it'd be up, up to you to, uh, to submit within sixty days, uh, a revised plan that at least be reviewed with the building inspector.
The plan will have to be looked at by you, so coming to my office is just going to be a new, new application first.
Right.
Variance is handled, special permits depending on how the cost.
So, we come to you for this, for the plan?
It's going to be an application to go back to the zone.
So, really, basically, let me leave before I say that.
It's, it's, we have to be listening to us.
All right, that's it. Okay, it's got to go back to the, to the, to the zone, I'm sorry?
I'm just saying that, that's going to be right around, and we, I just wanted you to be able to, because you guys probably don't even need to write one, you might...
January thirteenth, yeah, so that's what I'm...
The application should come forward on January thirteenth, so...
I'm just...
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, I'll accept a, uh, a motion that a, a letter be sent, go ahead.
Uh, I'll make a motion, uh, to draft a letter to be sent, um, to the Gons, advising them, and, uh, CC, the building inspector, advises them to hold up on any fines, uh, if the cease and desist law is upheld, and, uh, new plans are submitted within the six...
A new plan?
(laughing)
A new plan, a new construction plan we submit within the sixty-day, uh, period for tonight.
And the cease and desist is adhered to.
Okay, Mrs. Combs? Oh, so there's a motion on the floor to submit the letter. Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a, uh, motion and seconding to forward a letter extending, uh, the cease and desist, and, uh, a letter saying with a sixty-day, uh, maximum period, that a new plan be submitted to the, the board and or slash the building inspector for a revised plan of the construction. At which time, after the sixty days, the, uh, the fines for violation could very well be in effect.
Yeah, there's no need to submit anything by sixty days.
Right. As determined by the zoning enforcement agent. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Combs.
Thank you.
Uh, petition number nine hundred. The Halifax zoning would appear, this will hold a public hearing on Monday, July eighth, two thousand nineteen, at seven oh five P.M., at meeting number one on the town hall. Four ninety-nine Pluma Street Halifax, Mass, are the application by Green Apple Farms for variance for lot access via a different location than the legal frontage at zero and two forty-one Franklin Street Halifax, Mass. Set property is owned by Baoka LLC and Green Apple Farms IV LLC. Oh, zero and two forty-one Franklin Street is shown on assessment map eighty-two lot one. Title reference book five zero seven three four, page one ninety-one. The applicant is seeking a variance to allow access to the upper portion of the parcel, parentheses, zero Franklin Street being developed as a passive sole facility, which is blocked by wetlands and other jurisdictional resource areas by using two forty-one Franklin Street, map ninety-three lot nine A. Granted this variance will allow the applicant to access the rare property with the least impact to the resource areas and associated buffer zones. The requested variance is in accordance with the Halifax zoning bylaws, section one sixty-seven ten L. Area rezoned residential petition number nine hundred. We're out. Oh. This is, uh, from Keith Acres, uh, sent Monday, November fourth, two thousand nineteen, uh, to, uh, Alana Snow, CC Mike Agonko, regarding Green Apple Farms petition number nine hundred. Good afternoon, Alana. I hope this email finds you well. I apologize for the late notice, but I was hoping to withdraw our petition without prejudice. The reason for the withdrawal is that we were able to successfully execute a purchase agreement for the property in question, and therefore, we now no longer require the original requested variance. If there is a official document and need to sign and make this request, please let me know. Best Keith Acres VP of Development, uh, Skanapa Capital LLC, two fifty West Fifty, Seventh Street, in New York. So, we withdrew their application?
Yes, and I can withdraw.
And what you did get... Do you have any other, uh, application from them regarding now that they, they own the, the, this different piece of property, or anything like that?
Yes.
Okay, they withdrew. Any questions? Addition is good.
They require another variance for access across that property, right? This is not the legal frontage?
I acknowledge, so you purchase the other lot, so I could sign it?
Yes.
So, they can...
But it's not the legal frontage, it's less than a hundred fifty, is that correct?
Well, they have two, they have one on the one end, and I agree with one on the south end.
Yeah.
But nothing represented, not, nothing's been presented for the building, right?
I think it's a service, it's a lot to cut in there, planes will be down. Okay.
It's just...
What's the point of going down? What's that?
Just ask them.
They have to show what they're going to...
Yeah.
Okay.
It's afternoon at two o'clock. I know it's used.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, nothing, there's no application for variance or special permits.
There is.
Right. Right. So, there's nothing in the bill of course, this is important. All right, I need a, a motion and, uh, to accept the notification of withdrawal regarding, uh, petition, uh, by Green Apple Farms, petition number nine hundred.
Making motion to accept withdrawal of petition number nine hundred by Green Apple Farms.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Boarding on this, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Okay, thank you. All right, seeing that it's not quite eight o'clock, why don't we, uh, take a quick, uh, reset into a, a turn back here at five o'clock, how's that? Oh, do I have a motion for the, uh, ticket? Or eight o'clock, yes, eight o'clock. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Recede at eight o'clock. It's, uh, eight o'clock, we'll move on to petition number nine ten, the Party Trust, Amanda Estates, on Elm Street in Halifax for a special permit. Hi, good evening, how we doing?
Good, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone.
Can your name, sir, please?
My name is Adam Porowski, and I represent the Party Trust. With me this evening are Andrew Moncrief and Ed Johnson, who are trustees of the trust, and Joe Webby, Webby Engineering, Project Engineer. And we're here to record this evening to request a modification of our two thousand fifteen special permit for the Amanda Estates multifamily development, to reference a revised, certain Amanda Joe for together. It is September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, showing no individual lot lines. And I am going to apologize ahead of time, because this is a long story. I've tried my best to shorten it, but there's just so much information over these many years. I'll do my best to go through this material quickly and explain how we got here. I believe you're all familiar with the project, twelve point five acres, Elm Street, and it's the first two thousand fourteen, uh, planning board rated site plan approval for twelve-unit multifamily development. This is one of the first multifamily developments under the town's bylaw. And you may remember, this is the important point, that the planning board requested that Joe draw on the site plan lot lines, um, on the plan, showing each duplex building on a separate lot, the purpose of which was to demonstrate that we had, um, the requisite number of units. The number of units can't exceed the number of acres we have, we can't have more than twelve units. Um, in January of two thousand fifteen, the ZVA granted its special permit, which incorporated, uh, the site plan approval and the plan that was revised at the request of the planning board. Um, in reliance upon the site plan approval and the special permit, Party Trust built a road, put in all of the utilities, and then thereafter, in May of two thousand seventeen, the building inspector issued four building permits to build duplex units, and two buildings have been substantially completed in reliance upon the building permits. Uh, it was surely after the issuance of the building permits that Mr. Andrews, who's currently at the selectmen, he's the son of the chairman of the planning board, appealed the issuance of the building permits and requesting enforcement. He had a number of reasons why those building permits should not be issued, uh, but really, the relevant issue is, uh, his belief that Party Trust is required to subdivide its twelve point five acre parcel, so that each building is located on a separate block. Uh, the, uh, the building inspector denied enforcement, because he doesn't believe that that's what's required under multifamily bylaw. Uh, that was appealed to your board. Uh, you supported the decision of the building inspector and denied the appeal. Mr. Andrews then sued this board, um, in the land court. Uh, the land court, uh, looked at the matter, decided that this board's decision wasn't complete enough, and you may remember, remanded it back to the board for further consideration, and then... And then in August of 2018, you issued your remand decision. And there were a couple of key findings, I'm not going to go through the entire decision, you know your own decision. The first is that you determined that the specific provisions of 167-12A, which relates to multifamily development, govern this project, and that the general provisions in 167-10 do not apply. And that's important because, it's important because there are no minimum lot frontage requirements in 167-12, it's not a requirement of a multifamily development. And so I would just highlight that because you may hear discussions about the need for frontage. That is not a requirement here. You also found that 167-12A, which is the multifamily development bylaw, does not require the subdivision of the 12.5 acre parcel, and you concluded that the project is located on a single lot of land under one ownership of not less than 10 acres, which is your definition of multifamily development. Case, the remand decision went back to the land court. At that point, the parties gave the summary judgment, which basically you ordered to judge, legal issues based upon agreed upon material facts. And the land court judge granted summary judgment to the zoning board and the party trust on the issue of the specific provisions of 167-12. And so the land court agreed with your decision that the specific provisions of 167-12A, the multifamily development bylaw applies and not the general provisions of 167-10. However, the land court did order for trial a specific issue of whether the site plan approval and the special permit was conditioned upon the division of the property in the lots. You basically looked at what the decisions said and said, listen, I need your testimony on this, we need to have a trial. And so we did have a trial, and ultimately the land court judge disagreed with the zoning board of appeals and the party trust, and found that the trust's site plan approval, and this is important, says "for the moment," that's an exact quote from the judge's decision, which I think you've all seen, requires that the trust create individual lots for each approved duplex. Importantly, the land court did not find that the bylaw, that was the interpretation of the bylaw, they seemed to say, if you look at the words of the decisions, they reference a site plan that shows lot lines. And that was the same site plan that the planning board required that we submit to them to draw the lines on the plan to show our density. The land court has allowed us to fix what at this point is, is a almost procedural issue. They've stayed the action and given us the chance to come back to the town to fix this problem. Since the planning boards have required that we draw the lot lines in the plan, we went first to the planning board, which seemed perfectly logical to us, to waive the requirement because the planning board actually did the exact same thing for one of the, when the other multifamily developments that were approved, and that's the Halifax Trails project that was approved in 2016. So originally Halifax Trails was a multifamily development project that was approved in 2014, at the same time the party trust was approved, and the planning board asked Halifax Trails to draw the lines in the plans. The Halifax Trails permits expired. I think the project was sold to different developers, and when the developers came back in in 2016, they recognized that there was this problem, that the bylaw doesn't require these lots and these lines in the plan. The lines actually caused problems, and I'll explain that in a moment. And so they actually went to the planning board, said, could you please waive that requirement? And the planning board agreed, and so the planning board granted that waiver to Halifax Trails in 2016. And so we said, please give us the same relief, and gave Halifax Trails to fix this problem. At that point, Mr. Andrews took the position that the planning board did not have the legal authority under its planning board to do that. Town council, Ms. Wessel, agreed with the planning board. We anticipated that problem, so there's another way of doing this. And the other way of doing this is to present to the planning board a revised plan that doesn't show the lot lines, and ask the planning board to endorse the revised plan, our 2019 plan, because you had already said that you don't need to put those lines in the plan under the multifamily development bylaw. So we asked them to, and said, grant us a waiver to modify the site plan approval to substitute the revised plan showing no lot lines for the 2014 plan that showed the lines. And the planning board at that point, at that point said, listen, we'd like the zoning board to weigh in on this and to present, the planning board, choose to present to the zoning board the plan first before we enter our decision. And so that's what we're doing this evening. If the ZVA agrees that the new plan is appropriate without the lot lines, we then hope that the planning board will also agree, modify the site plan approval, which is the real problem here that references the old plan, and that should hopefully end this two-year-plus fiasco. You have the legal ability to modify your special permit, providing you go through the public process, and that's what we've done. The new plan, which fairly straightforward, you've seen the plan, it's simply a site plan that shows no lot lines, no, the buildings are on one single lot greater than 10 acres, is entirely consistent with the building inspectors' interpretation of the bylaws, your interpretation of the bylaw originally as a result of the appeal, your interpretation of the bylaw on remand. And so we're simply asking that you take the same position that you had previously, that the bylaw does not require the subdivision of the 12.5 acre parcel, does not require each building to be constructed on an individual lot. We don't think the bylaw requires subdivision. It was always intended to confirm density of multifamily development, can't, the number of units cannot exceed the number of acres, so as I mentioned, we have 12 units because we had 12 acres. If you actually adopted Mr. Andrews' interpretation of the bylaw, it really rendered the multifamily development bylaw completely meaningless. Presently, under your zoning bylaw, you can construct a multifamily development on a single lot, you know, that law would have to conform to whatever the zoning dimensional requirements are within the district by special permit. So you can do that now by special permit under your bylaw. I think the purpose of the multifamily development bylaw is to afford flexibility for multifamily developments and allow you to increase density, providing you had a minimum of lot acre of 10 acres. So if you're now going to require multifamily developments to have, construct a building on each lot, each of those lots needs to conform zoning, you've gutted the multifamily development because you don't need the bylaw anymore. It has no purpose to you because you could do that already under the bylaw for multifamily dwellers. And so if you adopt that reading of it, you're essentially legislating away the multifamily development bylaw without going through the town meeting process, and that's the practical thing. There's also a practical problem with it, as I suggested earlier, which is that the multifamily development bylaw anticipates that you're going to create a condominium, that the condominium association is going to own the large parcel, and that the unit owners are going to own the individual units, like most multifamily developments. Amanda Estates was created with a condominium. In fact, why it took so long to get the building permits after the 2015 was that the town actually required Amanda Estates to submit its condominium documents to review, and that went through a lengthy six-plus-month process in order for the condo document to get approved. And so requiring after property's been placed in condominium of the condominium association and condominium bylaws, requiring then the later subdivision of the parcel creates all sorts of title issues because the condominium was created in clear reliance on the bylaw, which specifically refers to condominiums. Now, I suspect that Mr. Andrews has been pro everything he can against the law to see what's going, so I'm trying to stay focused on the real issues here. So as alluded to, you're probably going to hear discussions about lot frontage. That's already been cited by the land board. 167-12, which the multifamily development bylaw controls, and not the general occurrence at 167-10 where you find that no lot, there is no, you know, more lot frontage requirement for multifamily development under 167-12. You'll probably hear discussions regarding your prior land use council's advice that was given to both board and rejected. We respectfully suggest that you properly rejected that advice because it was bad advice that ultimately has led to all of this litigation. And by the way, you don't need to follow your attorney's advice, it's your responsibility and the court's defense to interpret the bylaw, and you've already consistently interpreted the bylaw to not require subdivision of multifamily parcel and construction of buildings on individual lots. There may be some statements that there are longstanding interpretations of bylaws. There only been a handful of multifamily developments that have been approved, and as we said, the first couple, the first couple that came out were two, Amanda Estates and the first iteration of Halifax Trails, and all sorts of problems, actually trying to work through what's not there is the bylaws. There isn't any longstanding precedents, those are the only two projects I'm aware of that really have any relevance here. And as I said, we have this curious instance of the planning board already fixing Halifax Trails, but the planning board now takes the position that we're not entitled to the same remedy. So we're asking the board to really, to be consistent, the zoning, the building inspector's zoning enforcement officers has been consistent in his interpretation of the bylaw. You've been consistent in your interpretation of the bylaw, the two prior instances when the matter's been confronted with the board. And as I said, the land court hasn't overturned your interpretation of the bylaw. All the land court has said is that, well, you know, these permits contain conditions of the plan. So what we're asking you to do is to please modify the special permit to reference the 2019 plan, which doesn't show lot lines, because that's what your bylaw, that's what your bylaw says, is it does not require the subdivision of our 12.5 acre parcel, and does not require that each building be constructed on an individual lot. And so we're asking this board to be consistent, to allow us to fix this problem.
So your application tonight, if I, if I understand this correctly, then your application tonight, it hasn't changed in any way other than you're submitting a new plan with no lot lines?
Correct, that's right, yeah.
In which case you're looking from the zoning board for a special permit?
So to modify the special permit simply to replace, you know, the plan reference for the 2014 plan with the 2019.
Okay.
And again, I thought it appropriate to request the planning board to do that, the planning board would like you to be in on that issue also.
If I can, and I'd like to ask town council if in fact that, is that within the purview of the zoning board of appeals to, to accept this new revised plan from the 2014 application to the 2019 one, which no longer shows the lot line designation?
So the request is to modify a special permit, and pursuant to statute, there is no authority to modify a special permit. So essentially you are issuing a new, you would be issuing a new special permit. But the only difference would be the replacement of the plan from 2014 to the 2019 plan.
But would still require?
It requires, yes, it most definitely requires that you issue a special permit with that new plan, based on that new, on the 2019 plan, showing no lot lines.
And that is within the duties of the board, what would we have to do, Amy? We would have to?
Issue a new special permit.
Okay.
You would issue a new special permit referencing that plan.
Referencing the new one.
The 2019 plan. And, and you know, the question is, is, does, you know, does section 7D apply, which states that, you know, each, each building has to be on an individual lot? Or does 12A apply, which is silent as to that?
That was my next question.
And then we also have the definition of multifamily development, which states that the lot, the all dwellings are on one individual lot. And so we have a clear contradiction in the bylaw. And interestingly enough, in all of the paperwork that we've received over the past month, the voluminous amount of paper, the only document that actually references the definition of multifamily development that I could find was your remand decision. So back when you guys entered, when you guys issued a remand decision, who took into account the definition of multifamily development? And in that decision, you had stated that 7D, which requires an individual lot for each building, you had explained that that was for density purposes. It is in your purview as the zoning board of appeals, it is in your purview to interpret your zoning bylaw. And unfortunately, in this case, we have contradiction in the zoning bylaw.
In the definition still?
The definition versus the section. The one thing that I do not agree with what was, what was said so far, I don't agree with the fact that there is no frontage requirement. And that is because in the density chart at the end of, well, it's in section 11, but it's at the end of the bylaw, there are footnotes for reduced density or different densities for multifamily developments, and there is no footnote on frontage. So I do think that 150 feet frontage is required.
But that's in, in section 11?
Correct.
Separate from 10, the section 10 requirements, whereas if we went strictly by section 12?
Right.
There is no requirement?
Right, but it's important to note that in section 12, it lists the density requirements, the different density requirements, for example, the front yard and distance between buildings, but it does not say anything about frontage. And so they're interpreting it that no frontage is required. I'm interpreting that as frontage is not different, it's 150 feet.
But since there was no designation, then, Amy, that we, we can't vary the frontage requirement in section 11?
You can accept Attorney Brodsky's interpretation.
Oh, I see.
If you wanted to. My, I don't agree with his interpretation, but the one thing I definitely agree with Attorney Brodsky is that you don't have to, you don't have to agree with it just because I'm town council. It's your, you guys are the ones that interpret the zoning.
So, 167-7D 2A, which is separate from the 10 and the 12, talks about frontage. So aside from?
No, that talks about lots.
Whatever lot it is, an individual lot, whatever that might mean, I don't know what that is, shall have continuous frontage in a public or private way. So that's separate from 12 and 10?
Correct.
Is that section 11?
No, that's section 7.
So, so the other thing, the fact that, I think that we're at a, we're at a disadvantage because in my opinion, the zoning bylaw contradicts itself. We're at even more disadvantage because the judge did not come out with some clear direction to the town. The one thing the judge did come out with that was clear is section 10 does not apply, does not, that does not apply here. So we are on, yeah, 12A.
Okay. I also think, you know, bottom line, it's, it's been the practice of our board too, that when you had stated previous that our decisions in the past where they're all been taken into account based on their own individual merit, we have used the lot lines as density requirements, so, you know, to measure distance between buildings and that type of thing. And I think, well, since I've been on the board, and not certainly all multifamily developments, but that's, that is how we've issued it and reviewed different applications in the past. Okay.
Mr. Chair, just to respond to a few points. First, I am going to expect to disagree with town council regarding modification. I'm looking at the Massachusetts Land Use and Planning Law Handbook, it talks about three different instances where the board can in fact modify a decision. I prefer the board to Hunterkin versus zoning board of appeals versus Hadley, which talks extensively about modifications. And in that instance, similar to this, we had someone, a successful applicant, he was eager to perfect. super perfect, he backed me in and requesting a change in the condition of the permit. And the court goes on to say that the board can do it, provided however, that if you're going to do a substantive amendment, that you need to comply with relevant notice and hearing requirements. That's why we submitted an application, provided public notice and comply with all the procedural requirements consistently with the county versus our appeals. So we're not asking for your issue of new special permit, we're asking that you could modify the existing special permit by simply referencing the plan. And I didn't want to suggest that we don't have frontage, we do have continuous frontage on the way. It's just that we are not subject to a minimum lot frontage requirement on the cause of section 12 doesn't contain that. So this is one parcel greater than 10 acres with continuous frontage on a way. So it does have frontage, it's just there's no minimum numerical requirement that applies.
So Amy, do we, then, we can't modify the special, the special permit that's in front of us now, it has to be a new?
I think I spoke, it doesn't have to be, it's not technically a new special permit, but you will be issuing a new decision.
Yes, we agree.
Oh, okay.
We agree that's a new decision.
Yeah, you can't just take your decision and slip it in the new plan. So we have to issue a new decision. It would be the same to town, which I think it might be, or is it?
Can you give us a brief breakdown what, what your, what the new?
Oh, it's simply, very simple, it's the same site plan, and if you remember, can you go to copy the old one? Yes. Is she? Okay, so this is, this is the new plan set. It's simply the, the first sheet of the plan set. Do you remember, remember that the planning board 2014 showed it, told us to draw the line behind, I have a copy of my file that can hand out. And so the property shown with lot, lot lines, it said, lot A, lot B, lot C.
Into where?
So all we've done is because we maintain that, we don't need to subdivide our one single parcel because it's a multifamily development, it's simply the exact same plan and we've eliminated the lot lines. That's the only difference in the plan. And everything else is the same. The project's been built. The infrastructure has sort of grown, the utility ring, and, and two of the buildings are already constructed.
Questions from the board, please? If you don't know your question.
Hey, well, I spent a while looking at this today, it's a lot for me to process, but multifamily development doesn't talk about buildings at all in the definition. It talks about dwelling units, and a dwelling unit can be, is, can be inside the same building. So arguably, a multifamily development could be three or more dwelling units in a single lot. So it could be the same building on one lot. It doesn't say anything about multiple buildings, but, and it seems to me like there's a, there's, and maybe you can answer this, why do you think there's a difference in definition between a multifamily dwelling and a duplex dwelling? If there wasn't an intent to divide that definition? Because it seems like these are duplexes.
So a duplex is simply a multifamily dwelling?
No, it's not. It's definite, it's, the definition is two separate definitions in the list of definitions. So I guess my question is why there's two separate definitions?
Well, let me, I'm gonna look at the definition.
Yeah, and it's right in, it's listed in there, but...
It's, it's because of the number of units.
Right, right.
So I'm sorry, where is the definition of duplex?
So right at the top, it talks about, it gives a dwelling duplex, and it talks about literally this type of building, which is two separate things right next, side by side with a firewall. And it just seems from the beginning that this is a duplex, doesn't, multifamily dwelling sounds more to me like, like a condo building with three, four, five apartments or separate units in it. But that, so I think from the beginning, this is...
It distinguishes duplex.
So, so I, I think, I, I can't explain why each building contains two units. I assume it had to do with configuration because we were at a maximum of 12, 12 units because we're 12 acres.
Right, right. I mean, you, you could arguably, with the multifamily dwelling units, put 12 in one building.
You could, absolutely.
And that would be a separate special permit.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. But this, this was approved as a multifamily development with six buildings, each building containing two units, that happens also to be a duplex. I think I followed this.
Yeah. So, like, I guess the concern is, is there frontage at all, or no?
Yes, although the lot has frontage on Elm Street, there's also frontage on Mantis Way, which has been constructed.
So would there be, so, so your argument is that there's 150 feet of required frontage on every lot in town except for a multifamily development?
Correct, correct. Because of the, the way the bylaws written, the bylaw did, the bylaw is very specific as to certain dimensional requirements, but not others. And again, I wasn't involved in the writing of the bylaw, there's no minimum lot frontage requirement for multifamily development. And my, my guess is that it was created to allow flexibility because the town wanted to see more dense development. And as I said, and you've read it carefully, you can have a multifamily dwelling by special permit on a lot, right? That's, that's a special permit you have, you have here. So there must be something different about multifamily development, because why would you allow the same kind of development for a multifamily dwelling and call it a multifamily development? And in fact, you know, multifamily development is defined differently than multifamily dwelling by law, the two separate definitions. So all I can, all I can divine is that in adopting a multifamily development by law, there's a desire to create more flexibility to allow more dense development than is already allowed in the bylaw. And the point I was trying to make is that if you impose the same requirement for a multifamily dwelling, you just eliminated that flexibility, you eliminate multifamily development. And that serves no purpose, because I could just do, I could do a multifamily dwelling, but each lot would have to have 150 feet of frontage, and we'd have to meet the minimum wire requirements, and that's the typical zoning district.
But, so the, the reason I ask is because it says in that, in 7D2A, or wherever the heck it is, it says it must meet continuous frontage. And when you look at the table in the back, it lists continuous frontage. My, my assumption would be that that's what they meant, is that the continuous frontage, it's 150 in every zone in town.
Oh, but then, you know, again, there's a footnote that says 75 came from...
No, that's, no, that's setbacks.
Right, I'm sorry.
There's a footnote for the yard dimension.
Right, but there's no other, there's no other...
No, it says continuous frontage, so the table, which is separate than the yard dimensions.
I'm following along, I mean, yours, table of dimensions.
Yeah, so, so it says the yard dimensions over there, and it does give separate ones, which are actually increased from the side setbacks and the building setbacks for the, the yard dimensions for one, two, and three. But it, it lists a separate list of continuous frontage. And when you look at seven, when you look at 7D2A, it, it mentions that each...
Same language, that's right.
Right, each building, each building on an individual, individual lot which shall have continuous frontage.
So the, the table, actually, the table is actually referenced in 167-10 and 167...
No, it's 167-11.
11.
Right.
It's also, I believe in 10.
No, it's 11.
Well, I know, I know that...
The table is 11, yeah, right.
So, so the, the, the reference, that is, that is your standard requirement for a lot within the agricultural residential district. I don't dispute that if I had a single family lot in the agricultural residential district, that I would need 40,000 square feet and 150 feet of continuous frontage for, for that. But that, there's no reference in 167-12, which is the multifamily development, to lot frontage, despite the fact that there are setbacks. And it's interesting because the setbacks are between buildings. It's designed differently than any other development, and I think consistent with multifamily development that you're going to find in other towns. The whole purpose of adopting these kinds of bylaws is to allow you the flexibility to have greater density. So I, I'm...
Actually, I disagree, I completely disagree with that. The setbacks and stuff are increased for multifamily developments. So the rear setback and the front setback and the side setback are all in those footnotes, heavily increased.
There's no, there's no sides. You have a minimum of much larger than your lot size, so you can't do that on a 40,000 square foot lot, you need at least 10 acres to do that. So I don't, the numerical standards are increasing, but the lot area is exponentially increased.
Right.
So that's what gives you the flexibility.
Yeah, and I...
Because you can't do a multifamily development on nine acres, you have, need at least 10 acres.
Right. But I, I, I just, I guess my question, aside from going into the side setbacks and all that, which is not the point, the point is if they use continuous frontage and there's one uniform definition in, in all lots in town of continuous frontage, I would assume, and that's not in 12 or 10, that's in 7D2A, which is...
But it's just a term, continuous frontage, for that numerical standard. I said, we have, well, there's, there's only, there's one numerical reference.
But it's the same everywhere.
The, 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 the top of the chart simply says continuous frontage, and then it has a numerical requirement under E. That numerical, so we do have continuous frontage, but we don't have the 150 feet, which is not required for multifamily development under 167-12, which is what controls this.
But Amy, you disagree with that.
I should, I should...
And I should also, it's entirely consistent with this board, previous, this board did not require a variance for this project in 2015, when, when it proved the special permit, did not require a variance when the appeal was rejected in 2018, we did require a variance on remand, so...
But the planning board brought it up in the original meeting in like 2014, right?
That's correct, and it was determined that it was not needed because of a whole parking lot, so it was not requested, and this board granted a special permit without variance.
I've been monopolizing that.
What's the total frontage on, on the way? Not on Elm Street, on, on the, on the whole cul-de-sac, so...
The cul-de-sac, 800 feet, a lot, run that, 1200 feet, the way is 400 feet long.
But if it's one lot, what's the frontage on Elm Street?
No.
Okay?
Tell me how, on frontage, because we have, we have, we're frontaging...
I mean, as far as the buildings go, one, two, three, there's six buildings there, what's the frontage from building A to the other side?
Well, we, yeah, we, we originally, we had what, we had the dimensions. At that time, we told the planning board that we did not need 150 feet, we just had to put these on the 10, because of the lot. So when we came to you back in 2015, they were frontaged for each lot, it was less than 150 at that time. And that was approved, both the planning board and the appeals board.
So the, the original plan that was submitted with the lot lines on it shows, enumerates the, the frontage on, on the six lots?
Yes. Are we talking about the whole plan now, or are you...
I was just wondering, total frontage?
Partly clearly, it was thirds, first special permit, so you need four, if it's five on the board, you need four volts, if it was seven, you need five to two, for instance. Five person board is four to five, which is zero.
Whether it, I, I believe, I think the last I saw in, in one of the court documents, that four out of the six had the 150 feet, and two of them were, didn't have 150 feet. Does that sound right?
I remember reading that, I'm not sure that that's...
I've read so much stuff.
It's a lot of paper here.
Do you recall, Amy, at the top, yeah?
There was, there were two lots, when there were lot lines, there were two lots that did not have 150 feet.
Again, though, Amy, just to reiterate that, though, under section seven, the 150 feet for each, each lot would be required, but that doesn't apply, just 11 and 12.
The court held that section 10 does not apply.
The court held what, I'm sorry?
The court held that section 10 does not apply. The court did not opine as to whether section 7D or section 12A apply. Which I, I, I think the court did, did a disservice, I think the court did a disservice to the applicant, to the abuser, and to the board by not making that decision and by sending it back to this board. Because you did issue a very detailed, thoughtful, thorough remand decision, where you went through pretty much all of this. So I, I don't understand why the court did...
The remand's final conclusion was that, well, we, we approved it, we upheld the, the building inspectors?
Yes.
So what was found deficient was just the procedure that they were going by the wrong plan?
So my interpretation of the court's decision is that the planning board, the applicant went to the planning board with a plan that showed lot lines. And those lot lines, the planning board then issued a site plan approval based on that plan, referencing that plan that showed site, that showed property lines, individual lot lines. The special permit that was issued was based upon the site plan approval, and therefore your special permit that was originally issued was issued sheltering individual lots. And then there was a remand decision which explained why the individual lots were there for density, to calculate density purposes, things like that. But the court did not weigh in on whether those lot lines are required or not.
Okay, so I'm after a specific question, I'm building up the specific question. I mean, I don't want to get sued by anybody. Can I read out a court decision? I can read this to the public now. So when the judge ruled that this court thus concludes that the trust site plan approval, trust site plan approval for the moment requires the trust to create individual lots for each approved duplex in a man who states, for its part, the ZBA issued special permit 823 based on the endorsed site plan approval from the planning board, the only changes being those shown on revised sheet two. Creation of individual lots thus is also, for the moment, a requirement of special permit 823, albeit one that's by a byproduct of the trust having filed the September 14th plan with the application, not the requirement of the ZBA. So what it's saying then, what the judge is saying is, he's not telling us that it has to be subdivided. What he's saying is, because of the procedure and who used what, as of right now, it needs to be subdivided.
Correct.
He's not telling anybody to subdivide.
Correct, I agree.
Okay, you agree with that?
I agree.
Because what I'm after, and I'm sure everybody else is after, is whatever decision we come with, we want it to stand up, take the challenges. Okay? So that's, that's what we're after here. Because I'm coming here saying, well, why don't they subdivide it? That's what the judge said. But that's not what the judge said. The judge, just procedurally, by what plans were approved?
Correct.
And what plans the building permits were issued on that weren't the same ones.
Correct. And that's the reason why we're here.
So nobody, nobody...
To switch out that plan.
So, so that's the only part of our remand that was deficient, not the fact that we said it could be one lot.
The judge did not make a decision on that, correct?
He didn't make a decision on that because of the way it sits right now.
Yeah, it, it took the easy way out.
Right.
Where he went through 12 pages to say nothing.
So... The butler did it. So we all...when we're talking about this project, we have to remember that the bylaws are so screwed up that nobody knew, was it one building on one lot? I mean, even if it sits today, I can interpret it as multiple buildings on one lot. If you read, what is it, 12A? The very...after A, the next one says the parcel. Well, when you look up the definition of parcel, almost all the definitions of parcels say one piece of land that's not going to be subdivided. You can go deep deeper and find one that says a parcel can be subdivided, but even if you read the definition of condominium, it says the common areas have an undivided interest by all the parties that own the units. So as I argued, I think it was in 18 at the town meeting, that one building on one lot makes no sense. Just have subdivisions. Don't even have multifamily. That's what you're essentially doing, is you're making it subdivisions. So when the parcel has to be 10 acres, is that the smallest lot you can have a multifamily development on? That's how I read it. You can't even subdivide this lot then. So why did the planning board, the zoning board, the building inspector, the engineering firm, everybody miss this in 2014? It was an honest mistake. Everybody missed it. Now we have people here who, personally, I would go for variances because I think it's a hardship they didn't create. It's a financial hardship, and you can give variances for financial hardship, and these people didn't create it. So I'm all for this. Because I think it's...they are under a hardship, and I know we're not talking about a variance right now, but this is something they did not create because everybody made, hey, I wasn't there at the time, probably still would, you know? I'm not saying I wouldn't have made the same mistake. It was an honest mistake, and, you know, we have to just come up with a decision that's going to uphold scrutiny.
Yeah, it's been two years. Jerry, you'd like to weigh in or Bob?
I go back to what I thought on 12A when I read it, and I interpreted it just the way we voted on it. It is ambiguous in a lot of these things here, and like you say, why the judge had come out and give a, you know, a definite decision so that we wouldn't have to be here? They didn't do it. So there's nothing there that has really changed my mind, that 12A is what they applied for, and that's what I think the rules of the bylaws state. It's okay.
Yeah, I mean, they were given an approval for 74-foot of street frontage. They were given approval for two lots being under 150 feet. I mean, that's not their fault.
We can't stop the project.
And you had also made mention too, you can't vote...
No, I think we just vote on it the way it is right here.
Amy, can we vote on that the way it is right here? Submitted without the lot lines on it, where it was...
If that's your interpretation of bylaw, yes.
Bob, do you want to weigh in?
A lot to take in. Bylaw is conflicting. I don't think it should be subdivided, though. I think you have the one parcel that has to be 10 acres or bigger with all the buildings on it. And not subdivided. Subdivide it. Why not just have a subdivision there?
We gave it through Halifax Trail. Why don't we give it to them?
And the frontage, I don't think is required unless you subdivide it into individual lots.
And I have a procedural question. We can't give out a special permit unless the planning board has approved the site plan, correct?
I don't necessarily agree with that, with the way that that procedure is set.
But is that how it is set for us?
You could read it that way.
So has the planning board...
But the...
We have to find out if the planning board has approved this?
They do have a special permit. They are just seeking a modification of the special permit...
Got you.
Which was discussed at the planning board, but I also don't necessarily agree with Attorney Brodsky when he said that the planning board specifically said they wanted ZBA to weigh in. I'm not sure that was actually stated. I think it was decided that the applicant would come to the zoning board appeals with a modification to switch out that plan.
So did the original plan, the very first one, 2014, did not have the lot lines in it? Then it was the revision that had the lot lines in it? So now basically, like we stated tonight, we have the exact same plan without the lot lines in it from the original September of 2014, I think it was?
Is it September, Mr. Chair?
Hold on one second. I'd just like to get an answer to my question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes. And your name, please?
My name is Jane Kramer. I am from Flatman, Nebraska, in Aberdeen, and I represent Mr. Andrews in these cases. When the record is clear in the minutes reflected, actually, these were all submitted, is that it's at the first part of the trial. There's a second part of the trial that is coming, which may explain why the judge didn't complete the ruling. But in any event, when the plan was first submitted by the party trust in early 2014 that detected all of the lots, all of the buildings on the one parcel, there is a difference between parcel and lot. If you were carefully looking at the building treaty in the zoning bylaw, that makes a difference. Anyway, after the Halifax Trails application was pending in several of the man's estates, and the town administrator, Mr. Seelitt, consulted with the land use council, and as a result of that consultation, Mr. Seelitt offered a memo in which he stood with zoning board, the building inspector, and the planning board, and stated that due to the fact that 1677D2A clearly requires that each building be located on an individual lot with continuous frontage, the zoning board and the planning board had no choice but to deny the applications for site plan approval for a special permit as they were submitted. It was as a result of that memo that the planning board called out to the engineers of the party trust once the provisions of 1677D2A. And in those minutes from that meeting, Mr. Katsowski of Webby Engineering states that he was embarrassed, that he couldn't believe that he missed that, and he stated that he would go ahead and revise the plans to locate each building on an individual lot. So at this point, there are...and that is how the plans changed because the opinion was it was not approvable as one parcel not subdivided into individual lots. It is the case that of those six lots on the plans that the party trust then revised and submitted, that four of the six did have required 150 feet of frontage, two did not, and the party trust represented to the planning board that it would seek variances for those... the frontage variances for those two lots when it went in front of this board for the special permit.
If it was required.
Well, that's not what they said of the planning board. What the judge found after hearing all the testimony from all the witnesses was that the party trust had basically submitted the revised plans showing individual lots, each with frontage on a man's way, and that's how the building permit applications were submitted as well. But it had no intention of actually complying with the plans that it submitted. Rather, it decided its principles, Mr. Monti and Mr. Johnson, both of whom were witnesses at the trial, that they had no, because this is what the judge found, they had no intention of complying with the plan and subdividing. Instead, they believed that they could convince this board that that wasn't a requirement. However, when the plans came to this board and this board approved them, they didn't actually make that argument. So it was left ambiguous. But what then, when Mr. Andrews appealed the decision to the court, what Mr. Brodsky then argued to the court is that they didn't have to comply with their own plans. Because you have to remember that lot is a defined term in your zoning bylaw. It's not just nothing. Lot means lot, and, you know, it's a...it is an individual entity unto itself. So what Mr. Brodsky argued is, even though the plans show lots, they don't actually have to make lots. And as you can imagine, that would be a tough sell because if every plan that was submitted and approved by the planning board or zoning board's appeal in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, then it actually mean what it looked like just based on looking at the plan. And you say, well, yeah, that, we drew that, and that says lot A through G, but we're not...those aren't actually lots, so we don't have to subdivide them. Then no one would ever be able to tell what the requirements of any decision or plan are. And what the law is in Massachusetts is that, at least as to, you know, the cases that decide subdivision and all that, that an applicant is bound by its plans. And of course, that only makes sense because nobody should have to look behind the plans to figure out, look through the minutes and decide, oh, what did the board mean when it proved these lots? The lot is what the bylaw says. And that's a great truth. So at this point, there are three provisions that are in play of your zoning bylaw. One is 1677, and that contains, among other things, a requirement that each building in a multifamily development be located on an individual lot with continuous frontage. Then there's 16711, which is the table, which references, which clearly applies to multifamily developments, because the term multifamily development is stated three times in that table. And as you pointed out, there are...it varies the distance between buildings, et cetera, but it does not vary the 150 feet requirement of frontage. And then there is 16712. And when you said, I think it was you, Mr. Join, stated that he applied under 16712, that he has been urging that approach as well, but it would be rather absurd if an applicant got to determine which provisions of the zoning bylaw were applicable to it just based on what they reference in their application, right? You can't just get around requirements of the zoning bylaw by not citing those sections in your application. So the court's decision does only knock down section 10 for being in play. Section 7 is still in play, section 11 is still in play, and section 12 is in play. And I submit to you that when you can read all three of those provisions harmoniously with one another, the original parcel has to be at least 10 acres. The original parcel, which could be made up of a couple different lots, as was the case here, has to be under the control of the applicant at the time of files its plans. But then other provisions don't speak to parcel, they speak to lot. And Mr. Brodsky's continued insistence that this is inconsistent with the condominium form of ownership was also specifically rejected by the judge because, of course, all you do is convey each lot into the condominium to hold, and individual units are what the individual condo owner is using. So there's no inconsistency between a condominium form of ownership and the interpretation of the zoning bylaw that gives validity to each section that addresses the requirements of a multifamily development. And, you know, as stated, he has 74 feet of frontage on Elm Street. He does not receive the variance. A special permit stated in the zoning bylaw under chapter 48 is for the use only. The zoning bylaw specifically says that no special permit can vary or lapse any provision of the zoning bylaw. So you can't render variance by a special permit. So you have to think about that, too, when you think about what your special permit granted. The last thing I'll say is that in the town meeting in 2018, it was specifically put before the Halifax Town Meeting voters. Let's delete the provisions of 7D2A. Let's just delete it. Let's get rid of that passing provision that requires each building in a multifamily development to be located on an individual lot with continuous frontage. The town administrator, responding to questions from Town Meeting voters, stated quite clearly that even if you got rid of that, there would still be the 150-foot of frontage requirement. Notwithstanding that representation by the town administrator, the...with a motion to delete 7D2A, was rejected by the Town Meeting voters. So I would submit to you, and I put this in my papers, that there was a clear, not longstanding, but a clear interpretation that was followed, Attorney Huxton's interpretation, which gave weight to each of the provisions, read them in harmony. Yes, there are some inherent inconsistencies, but gave all these requirements weight, and those interpretations were accepted by the town administrator, by this board, by the planning board, and it was only when the building inspector's property on Mount Conset Street was brought into question that that interpretation started to change. So I think that you are entitled as a town to amend your zoning bylaws at any time, but that is a process that's governed by 40A. I think what you can't do is not give weight to the voters of Town Meeting who have specifically rejected essentially what Mr. Brodsky is asking this board to do in issuing a modification with special permit. That would be rejecting that vote, overriding that vote of the Town Meeting. If you want to change it so to make clear that individual lots are not required, there's a process for doing so. But just issuing a modification that overrides the clear language of the zoning bylaw, your town council's interpretation, and the Town Meeting vote, I would suggest to you is not the way to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Charlie, would you like to weigh in on this? I'd just like to give you an opportunity, if you'd like.
I'm going to be looking stuff up.
All right. The building inspector, would you like to weigh in on this at all, your opinion?
I've given my interpretation multiple times. Again, I think that they met requirements. I don't believe that you should subdivide. In fact, if you subdivide, will you create this amount of multifamily development? The only thing that makes this particular development, multifamily development, is the fact that it needs to be on one lot because they are effective duplexes. If you divide that and put each duplex on an individual lot, that is no longer a multifamily development because each duplex requires a separate special permit by a bylaw.
Which would have to abide by the frontage requirement.
It's the only thing that makes this particular thing, in my opinion, a multifamily development is that it be on one lot.
Now, and I agree, that's not, as of now, what our bylaw says.
It does say that. It does, it like 167D...and that was my original point in asking the question. I think these are duplexes, and I don't think it's a multifamily development.
Although there are multiple units on one lot.
Well, if they're on individual lots.
Well, they should have been, I think. So a multifamily development, I'm reading directly from this, and I'm going to be very honest, because I know I've come at people a couple of times. I have no idea the background of everybody on this. I'm just reading what we have. I've been against this from the beginning. I don't think it fits in that area. I don't think it fits with the established character of the neighborhood. I don't think they had the frontage from the beginning. I voted no every time this has come in front of us. But the bylaw specifically says, A, it's required that any multifamily development complex proposed here under shall locate each building on an individual lot which will have continuous frontage on a public way. Continuous frontage is unified in the entire town of 150 feet. And a lot is defined as something that is deeded. So when you look up the definition, it has to be a deeded thing. So they use the word lot specifically. And the argument is that locate means locate on a map that you show us and then don't actually put on a deeded lot seems a little preposterous to me. And then the second B, right after that, says the complete parcel. So it does sound, and I have no idea the background of any of this stuff, but I get a little nervous that now in the future, Halifax Trails came in here, I was sitting at this table when he came in, or that table over there, and he talked about how he had to put them on different lots, and he went back and did that. So, and I don't clearly remember the process, but I clearly remember him telling us that he wanted to put them on individual lots. I worry that in the future now, we're going to now have one lot with as many buildings as they want if they have a big enough acreage, and they can put them wherever they want and as long as they meet the distance between buildings, which we've kind of seen starting to happen already. And I think the intent of the bylaw, from my perspective only, because it's, I'm the only one, but the intent of the bylaw is to spread this stuff out, have it on a large parcel of land where the lots are all 40,000 square feet, where they have 150 feet of frontage. And it seems to me like that the bylaws are pretty strict across town to try and spread everybody out on purpose. And this just seems locating them on a map to try and avoid frontage and avoid the requirements just doesn't seem to be to jive with what's in there.
But we have that. That's called a subdivision. That's a subdivision.
It's called a subdivision of single-family houses.
What we've done now, what we've done now is make a multifamily development a subdivision, in essence.
Yep.
Or you could take that 12 acres and put one big building with 12 units in it.
Yeah.
Or subdivide it into a subdivision.
Yep.
All this time for the...because I came in late into this. I haven't been on the board that long. All the time, people interchange... that long, all the time, people interchange the words multifamily development and subdivision. The lawyers do it too, they do it all the time. And I keep saying, why did it just say subdivision? Because it's a multifamily development, you've got to keep that in your head. Now, the fact that we did have that town meeting and that discussion, we tried to remove it, shows how confusing it was. And this was agreed to by all the entities and all these setbacks and everything on Elm Street and all that, was missed by everybody. So we have to, in my mind, we have to set this back in 2014. Okay? You can't, you can't now say, well, what we did in 2018, now these people, you know, are stuck. So we have to find a remedy. I mean, if it was me, I would have done a 40B and put 48 units there and made some real money, if it was me. Maybe that can happen. And then, and then, and then, and then all our, and then all our, then all our density four ways, we don't even have a say in that. Because now the state did so.
Yes, Rob.
So.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
It's the intent of the bylaw.
Yeah.
So, and this is my interpretation, all of this is my interpretation. So, multifamily development bylaws, as far as I'm concerned, here's the town the ability to work with the developers to accommodate low-density housing, which is one unit per acre, okay? Agricultural institutional uses, that's 167-4, numeration of business, okay? While at the same time, I mean, the purpose of the zoning chapter, which is 167-1, by Chikby, promoting the health, safety, convenience morals of all fairness and inhabitants of Halifax for less than danger from fire and congestion, and to encourage the most appropriate use of the land. So we're supposed to encourage, okay, low-density housing. This is low-density housing with one unit per acre. It's less, it's more restricted than 40,000 square feet, okay? And to encourage the safety and health and convenience, okay? What is the intent of the subdivision control? It's safety, okay? It's ingress and egress. That was all addressed with the fire department and the police department, when I went to the planning board, it was addressed from day one, okay? The wheelbase tying on the largest equipment, they addressed that, and the safety, promoted, okay? The fire department and police department for the safety of inhabitants. So what is the intent about our law, to Mr. Russ Howard? You know, again, what, do we want to work with the developers on one unit per acre? Or do we want to give them that?
Well, that was, that was very true, because I do think the consistency of the board is very important too, over the years. We, we have followed that. There's been, even with the Mandarin States, we first started talking about, and there's been other projects in town, some of them 40B, some of them not, where, where it was, where it was the desire, the intent of this board, that we don't turn Halifax into Mattapan Center, you know, where we have a big gigantic building with, with, God knows what. And we worked, we have worked in the past, on that very purpose that you were talking about, Rob, that to be more appealing, and, and in this project too, they have also done that with the outside, the duplexes were done off of, off of Home Street there too, there are a couple of them there. We've worked with the, with the contractors to at least make it appealing, and that's been the general intent of, of what we've done from the, from the jump start. So, and I do think being consistent that way, it was the board, that we did use the lot lines for density purposes and for measurement wise and whatnot. And, and I think that all has to be taken into account, of course, of the legality. But at this point, I'll, I'll take a couple of questions from the audience. Just to let you know, all questions come through the, through the chair. There isn't any, you know, and if you need an answer to a question, I'll see if I can find out for you, but everything comes through the, through the chair. Yes? Somebody?
Yes.
Amy, yes?
Joe Andrew, City of Halifax. I believe in 1984, that's one of the zoning bylaws that you're using, isn't that because we had to relax planning and we had Halifax metal and we didn't want these things, you know, we made three parts of children in our stores, fire department? I thought back in 84, we put these bylaws in to stop all these big developments coming in, because Halifax is small, we want to keep it that way. So the voice of the people is 150 feet of frontage?
Right, but as was discussed before, we did the same thing with, with the 40B plan. You can't just say, no, we're not going to allow any 40B plans in the town of Halifax. If there, if there has been a, a problem or, like, they can, the contractors can go directly to the state and they just give them carte blanche. So what, like I had just mentioned, what we have been trying to do is work with the contractors and people who've come in for these different projects to try to get most appealing and what's, and what's best for the town.
What was best for the town is to keep 150 feet. I think 62 is.
Thank you. Yes? Your name, please, I'm sorry.
My name's Amy, I'm speaking as a citizen. And, um, on the density chart, as you can see here, every single area of town, whether it be agricultural, business, industrial, industrial two, conservancy, has 40,000 square feet. So what zone is this in?
As I previously, it's agricultural residential.
Okay. So if it is, then it needs 40,000 square feet, 150 feet of continuous frontage. It needs a 200-foot depth, a 50-foot front, and let's, we all know those, right? You see in that, right? The schedule of density regulations, this is a note underneath that, as it applies to the construction of a new dwelling house in a residential zone, comma, shall apply to a new dwelling house built in zone, in any zone other than residential, but in no case shall a multi, multiple, multiple, sorry, multiple family dwelling be constructed on any lot having any area less than 40,000 square feet. It says it plain as day.
Right, and that's under what section, Amy?
Yes, but so, let me go back.
167-7?
11. It also says, under the multifamily section, let me just get to it. There's edited notes underneath our bylaws, just so that anybody who is not aware, but in it, it says to refer to the chart under the multifamily section. So then I'm going to refer to section 28. We were just talking about that in a hearing for Bow Street, number 905. What is the only reasons that you can give about this? And what are they?
Amy, what are you trying to do?
I'm asking you what the hardships are, what is the?
That has nothing to do with, with this, with this application. This application is being judged on its own merit, it has nothing to do with Bow Street. So if that's all you have to do, this isn't a, isn't a quiz show right here.
Oh, no, this is, this is our laws.
As we went through before, in the previous application, it has to be a hardship, it has to, it's not derogate from the intent of the bylaw, and it has to be within the established character of the neighborhood.
What is the intent of the bylaw?
It's, it's up to the board to, to determine that.
What about this?
Yes, go ahead.
Gordon Andrews, 242 Elm Street. I'd just like to point out exhibit one that we handed in, that on page three, petition 808, section, the second last paragraph, says, section 167-7D-2A's specific use regulations provides that any multifamily development complex shall locate each building on an individual lot. Mr. Piccarelli needs a variance from the section, since both buildings are on one lot. So I'm just bringing up the back, I'm bringing up.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate that, we'll bring that up at another, that has nothing to do with this one here.
This applies, because the interpretation is that since both, they're asking for six buildings on one lot. You needed a variance from that condition. But you need a variance from that issue.
Six buildings on 12 acres. We did it to Halifax Trails.
Under the direction of the building inspector, who said that it's a different interpretation of the bylaw, after, after, we have already seen that this, this needs relief. It's needed relief in 808, it's really needed relief in 811, it's needed relief in 842, and when you looked at the country club, it needed relief in 847. It's needed relief this whole time, this interpretation needs relief. And the only way the zoning board can grant a special permit is under 167-7D. That's your power. You're, you can't give a special permit under 12A. You have to give a special permit under 7D. So you have to follow those, those bylaws. And it says in the powers of the zoning board, you can't waive, vary, or relax those conditions. So the only way you can give a permit is under 7, is under 7D. And you have to follow the rules of the zoning board, which say you can't waive, vary, or relax the conditions. So if you know the condition exists, you can't waive, vary, or relax it, you can't grant this petition.
All right, thank you, Rob.
I'd just like to know, Rob, are those identical applications that you just mentioned?
It is.
Are they identical applications?
May I?
I'm sorry, Rob.
I just asked you, I'm sorry, you asked a question. Are those applications that you just referred to identical?
Well, I think we all know that they are not, so.
Request for a multifamily development complex special permit, that was the request for that petition, just like all the other ones I mentioned.
Well, what is the pleasure of the board? Do you guys feel, what would you like to do? Would you like to vote on this, or take it under advisement, or vote on it right now to, to accept the petition as submitted?
I think we prolong it a little bit, just sit here and test our minds.
Absolve it, review it, the both sides of arguments that they presented.
Hold on one second. Jerry?
This goes the same way as a lot of other cases we've looked at. We keep on going on and on and on, and we have all the information in front of us.
After your research, Mr. Sealy, do you have anything else you'd like to add on that?
No, this time, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Amy, anything you would like to add?
Um, no, the only thing I, again, would point out is multifamily development, the definition says development of three or more dwelling units on a single lot of land under one ownership, and that uses, that uses the term lot. So that's where we have a real conflict.
But dwelling units aren't buildings, right?
It could be.
I guess, yeah.
I just think we need to make sure that whatever decision we, we come up with, because I hear what you say, rarely I do, you know, I've read it about four times that you wrote, you know? My wife's like, what are you doing now? Keep reading that. So, trust me, I'm listening very carefully. We need to make sure that whatever decision we make is going to hold up to scrutiny, you know? But as a person, and a fair-minded, reasonable person, okay? This happened in 2014, everybody missed it, right? Is there anybody who said they didn't miss something? You know? In 2014, I'm talking about the board members, the boards that made the decisions, okay? Some, some, everybody missed something, okay? From, from everything I've read, and now what's being, some of the things that are being thrown up, I feel some things were missed by everybody here. I, I just don't see why the town's going through all the expense and all the problems, it's a first-class operation. I've been down there numerous times, they're doing a great job, you know? So we got to find whether, whether we listen to, I'm trying to really hear what the judge is trying to say here in his, in his decision. You know, can, can they withdraw this, go to the, go to, I'm asking you now, go, can it be withdrawn? Can they go for the separate lots and then go for variances on the frontages on the, on the main road and for the, and for the, the two lots? Because now, as far as I'm concerned, with decisions the town made, they're under a financial burden that they could ask for variances and we could justify, justify it and give it to them. I'm, I'm looking for a solution that is going to hold up. So if they withdrew this petition and resubmitted to separate lots, now they need variances, right? They need variances on frontages.
They would, however, I think.
They didn't create those hardships now.
I mean, I don't think it's within the purview of the board to design projects for applicants.
Right, I'm just asking, would that hold up?
I don't know if it would, because you are, you then have, you don't have three or more units on a lot, you only have two units on a lot. So it goes back to, it's a duplex.
Then they need.
So at that point, you're saying?
They did need four lots with three units each, and they still have 12.
Which was Halifax Trails, because they had four buildings and one, four units in one building.
They could probably, if they had four lots, they could probably need the requirements, they wouldn't need any. But again, it's not in your purview, it's not in my purview as town council to design projects.
I understand, I'm just, no, I'm just trying to find a solution that is going to satisfy everybody.
Well, that being said also, I do think, what we had mentioned before, you know, being consistent with the, with how we've used and voted in the past, and the criteria we've used to evaluate each and individual petition on its own separate merit. I'll take recommendations from the board, you want to, well, let's, let's start this way. First, it's the regular voting members.
Mr. Chairman?
Will be, will be Kasaya, hold on. Kasaya, Peter, myself, Bob, and Jared. Yes, sir.
Would you allow?
Your name, please.
Gordon Andrews, 68 Elm Street. Would you allow the people to finish their comments before you move forward with the vote? We, we came to a public camera.
This is the first time you've raised your hand.
That, I.
I've had my hand up.
Well, people were talking, I mean, you don't expect me to.
Well, but you don't recognize them and say, okay, you're in it.
Right.
So I'm asking you as chairman, would you recognize the people that want to speak?
Yes.
At the public camera?
Yes, I will.
That's why we're here.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Back in 2008, David Moskew said that, back in 2014, this is where this is, the beginning of this is correct, so this is, this is where it needs to be corrected, because there was some serious mistakes made in 2014. Because as far as what Peter was saying is, is it doesn't conform, what the problem is, is it doesn't conform to the bylaws. Regardless of what, even getting to what the neighborhood looks like, if it fits the neighborhood, it didn't conform to the bylaws. And 2014 is where the mistakes were made by the planning board in order to issue these permits and then to the building inspector. So as a taxpayer, if there, if everything was due and involved with the bylaws in accordance with the bylaws, we wouldn't be sitting here. The bylaws clearly stated, it's pretty simple, in the very beginning, as a matter of fact, my notes, in the very beginning of the bylaws, all buildings need to fall in coordination with the bylaws, all. Not multifamily separated from that just because it's a separate section. All buildings need to fall under the bylaws. So if everything was built in Mandarin States in accordance with the bylaws, we wouldn't be sitting here. They wouldn't be spending all the money that they spent in, in attorney fees and everything else in order to proceed. They should have been done and be occupied had they been in accordance with the bylaws. So we need to go back to 2014 and figure out what the heck went wrong. Before, before, there's other people in this town that don't have a clue as to what's going on and what's being done by the people that we're supposed to be counting on to follow these laws. I came here for my children to have a good life. I didn't come here to run ragged with, with our, our politics and the people that we're supposed to be counting on to, to take care of our town. Let's follow the laws. That's what we need.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Jenny Kramer, Council for Gordon Andrews. Just respectfully, it wasn't missed in 2014, it wasn't missed by the town attorney, it wasn't missed by the town administrator, and it wasn't missed by the planning board, it was only missed by wedding engineering, who stated they were embarrassed that they had missed a clear provision of 167-7D-2A that required each building to be located on individual lot with continuous frontage. So they, so they revised their plans, they showed lot lines, submitted the same plans to the ZBA, and the ZBA issued a special permit. Again, you cannot vary any provision of the zoning bylaw in the issuance of a special permit.
Did the planning board say anything about the 72 foot frontage?
They, they represented to the planning board that they were going to see frontage, that they were going to create a new roadway.
Did the planning board approve the site with 72 feet of frontage?
Yes.
They missed it.
Yeah, okay, well.
That's what I'm saying, so everybody along the way missed something.
But, but, I also have.
That's all I said.
Okay, okay, I didn't understand what you meant. Okay, okay, I didn't understand what you meant. But I have to say that when the building permits were issued and the individual lots had not been created or required by their own plans, and Mr. Andrews appealed the issues of the building permits, your attorney, this board's attorney, told this board that you cannot, that you can uphold the issues for the building permits, they were issued illegally, the lots were not created, and Mr. Brodsky represented that his client was going to continue to build, and it was very clear from the minute of that meeting that your own attorney said he is not allowed to build when the, you know, the building permits are under appeal, and other members of the board said, "Well, he can, they can, he can continue to build at his own risk," which is what he did. And then the last thing I'll say is that you have to take into consideration provisions of the zoning bylaw that would be rendered absolutely meaningless if you accepted Mr. Brodsky's interpretation. One of those provisions is the provision for estate lots. That is truly the way that this could be developed as of right. This is a retreat lot, and this is also supported by them, a pork chop lot, an estate lot, a lot of backland with a thin and stricter frontage. It could be developed as of right as a single family. There is zoning relief that varies the amount of frontage that's required when the lot is big enough. So that's something they could do. That provision would be absolutely meaningless if you could just wedge a multifamily development in. What's the point of having estate lots in there? And then the other thing is, minimum frontage for new roads is 110 feet.
That's what I'm saying.
So they don't even have that.
But then why was it approved, why was the site plan approved? Well, so my point was that, you know, we're trying to fix something here that was, everybody missed something, that's all I said.
Okay, yeah, I understand, I'm just...
Right, that's what I'm saying. So that's why I think, you know, we should all work together to fix this. They're doing, you know, it's a first-class operation. Let's try to fix it legally and that it's going to, you know, follow the rules if we can. What's the remedy here? We shouldn't be fighting each other, we should be looking for a remedy.
Mr. Brodsky.
Thank you, I thought perhaps just last legs of the party applied. If you take a look at what the planning board gave you in 2014, you'll see that the board never intended the property to be subdivided. You actually read the home comments that was added here. They asked us to draw the lines on the plan to show the density, and notice the word subdivision being mentioned, you need to subdivide, that's such a rule, and the special permit, make no reference whatsoever to subdivision. It's very difficult to go back in time and recreate events from now five years ago. But the solution to the problem is, as we proposed, which is to simply modify the special permit to adopt the 2019 plan, which showed in the lot lines, because of the reasonable interpretation of the bylaw, in fact, this board's interpretation of the bylaw is that you do not need to subdivide this property in order to place each building on individual lot. And just, I have no reason to pick fights this evening, just simply because this is recorded, I just want to go on record, Ms. Truitt is a member of the planning board, there's a pending application in front of the planning board concerning this matter, and Mr. Andrews Senior is a chairman of the planning board. It's a bit unusual to have members of the planning board arguing on their pending applications of another board, but I'm not here to pick a fight, I just wanted to put that on the record for the report.
I would put it on the record, then, the chairman...
Yes, sir, did you have a question?
Also arguing, because that's what we have to do. I'm here as a resident, and I have the right to be here as a resident.
All right, what's the feeling of the board? So, Amy, we'll be voting on tonight on the application itself to include the new, or the, one of the...
To switch out the 2014 plan to 2019.
Just to do the switch or to vote on the application itself?
The application is for modification, it isn't the switch. Yes, so you are voting on the application, which specifically did state it was a modification.
But the vote is also whether it requires lots or not.
If we accept, if we accept, yes. If you feel the, right, exactly right.
Because I think the judge feels as though the way the original plans are, it should be subdivided, but if we feel as though it's, doesn't require lines, it doesn't have to be subdivided. Is my interpretation yours too, Dan?
I just couldn't hear you, what was it?
The judge interpretation is it needed to be subdivided with the lines there, but if there were no lines, it doesn't require to be subdivided.
If I understand it, what the judge was saying was, as the, as the process came through, and what plans were approved by the planning board, as of now, it would require, without this meeting tonight, it would require a subdivision. So the judge has left it open-ended. So I wish we had more direction, when our lawyers up here, to fix this so it all works for everybody, right? And it's done legally, and we find, we find a device in the bylaw that's going to make this work. Why are we fighting each other? You know, I don't understand it at all. You know, I'm very frustrated that we're fighting over something that, it's not fair that everybody, all the boards miss something. We agree, right? And now they have a financial hardship. So maybe that's the way to remedy this.
You know, every decision that this board makes, you have a 30-day appeal. No one appealed this decision back in 2014. Was that an appeal? Was it sent in 30 days after the thing was, we voted on it?
It was approved and signed by Robert Piterelli, the planning board, that has the lot lines. It's signed by him, and it says that it must follow 167.7D2 in all Halifax zoning laws. Who gave the special permit?
Yeah, but we could do that all day, and we could say, "Who approved the site plan? Who gave the special permit?" Yeah, but who gave the special permit? Who approved the site plan? Everybody made a mistake.
Right, that's what she was saying.
Everybody missed something.
Well, this is what we have to hear.
People are human, people make...
It says in the very beginning, the basic requirements, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the very beginning...
Your name, sir? Again, I'm sorry, I missed it.
My name is Gabe Mosso, 16th and 11th. Basic requirements of the bylaws, all buildings, structures here and after are erected, is reconstructed, altered, or moved, or use of premises in the town of Halifax shall be conforming to the provisions of this chapter. And you don't reconstruct your structure, land may not be used for any... The point is, is it's in... Who was on the, who was on the planning board in 2014? Who were the members of the planning board, sir?
I don't know every member. I know some of the members, I don't know the others.
Some of the members, yeah.
Right. But what's, Mr. Chairman, what's his point?
I don't know.
Do you want to ask him? I don't know what the point is.
My point?
Yeah, yes.
My point is, it smells funny, on the people that were on the planning board then.
Right.
Misdirected, misdirected party in all suit, complete.
And it resulted in...
My concern, I don't know about any of that. I don't think, I think everybody's doing what they think is correct. My fear is that estate lot argument, where now, if multifamily developers don't have to meet any frontage, any lot lines, or anything like that, we just dealt with an application where there were 11 lots, and they were all owned by the same person, and they were all together as a parcel, and they were individual lots, it was fine. I'm concerned that if we approve this special permit today, which I don't think is the intent of the bylaw, that we're just furthering down this inaccurate decision-making, but we're also opening up ourselves to estate lots, one in my brain, that we can just, all of a sudden, there's no lot lines and, you know, that's my concern with this.
And I agree with you moving forward.
Sorry, make it longer.
I agree with you 100% moving forward, but this was done in 2014, before the town in 2018 had a very specific question answered.
And it sounds to me like the court's going to solve all those problems, but I don't want to make it worse by making another decision like that.
Right, but is there a remedy we can find?
Point of information, this trial court is not going to revisit Indian for zoning issues. The second phase of the trial, if there is a second phase, is just to hear Mr. Andrews' claim against you, the ZBA, as to whether you have to pay any cost, but there's not going to be any further decision regarding the actual zoning bylaw.
Yes.
There will obviously be a right to appeal any modification of the special permit, as there is a right to appeal a special permit, so this court will be further involved and have to change jurisdiction. But I also want to say that one person who didn't get everything wrong is Mr. Andrews, and like every member of this community, Mr. Andrews is entitled to the faithful interpretation and enforcement of the zoning bylaws. So think about how you would feel if a multifamily development was being wedged behind your house and the zoning bylaws weren't being followed, and the developer proposed one thing, then proposed another thing, got it approved, then went to court and said it didn't have to comply with what it approved, and then sold land to a member of the school for well under its assessed value while this now is pending. I think that you could understand how that might impact a resident like Mr. Andrews, who didn't get anything wrong, and didn't appeal the special permit issuance or the site plan approval because of the very reason that it required individual lots.
The project was changed...
Mr. Brodsky.
Yes.
Rob, yes, what were you going to say?
Oh, I'm sorry. Project was changed to address Mr. Andrews' concerns in 2014. The driveway was relocated further away from him, and the sidewalk was relocated. The suggestion that somehow we've done something wrong here, the developer did everything to appease Mr. Andrews in 2014, and as a result, he did not appeal either the site plan approval or the special...
Which required individual lots, which you were required to create.
That is, again, in catchment, this is never to subdivide. So I'm adding to the problem, which is, you know, we are very interested in the board reaching a decision this evening. We've got to report back to the Land Court Judge tomorrow. My hope that I can report back to the Land Court Judge, the board's decision, obviously the board needs additional time to render a decision, I'll report back to Judge, to the judge for advisement. But we'd encourage the board at this time to render a decision, so that we can use this board.
Yes, sir, your name?
Governor Burris.
And your address?
I'm an outside of looking out. The way that I see the intent of the bylaw, if you have, you're required to have 10 acre house for individual development.
Correct.
10 acres minimum. So if you're required to require frontage involving these individual lots, right, what advantage would you have if you're saying you need 150 feet of frontage for each unit, and you need 40,000 square feet for each unit, and you need 10 acres? And you have the frontage, why wouldn't you just do 4A lots? Then why would you, I don't understand, this was created for flexibility to allow maybe a piece of property that wouldn't necessarily really meet 4A requirements, to allow a little bit of flexibility for, you know, some more affordable housing? That's the intent, I agree on it. I'm actually a member of the zoning board myself, and just reading this, this is my first time hearing all this, and I just don't see, if you have density requirements that you need, there was something about 30 foot buffer, I believe, from a building properties, and these are all things that are required. I can't see this requirement to have the frontage requirements of a 4A lot, because no one would ever do want to, it would never be done. You know what I mean, from a development standpoint, that you're basically just, like someone had mentioned earlier, you're creating a subdivision, that's what you're doing, and to have a 10 acre house under, to have individual lots, now you don't want to meet that requirement. A 10 acre house is going to be 1D of lot. Now, if you're subdividing it, you're creating a subdivision, you're creating D of lots for all those by drawing lot lines. That, I think the original intent of this, this subdivision for specific uses with the density regulations, that these are the requirements you have to follow, which, from what I've seen, they meet.
I hear what you're saying, I just think parcel is, could be a group of lots, not one lot, and I...
No, that's not, it says parcel, has to be 10 acre house minimum, correct?
Parcel, yeah, which could be...
Right, parcels, not individual ones added up, they just, that's what they don't want, they don't want you taking two 5 acre houses and adding them together to reach that 10 acre.
But they could be under one ownership.
That's what they did here, actually.
I see what you're saying, but I do think that's the intent is. I can't see, we're reading into it.
If you have 10 acres, and you have to have the required frontage for each unit, you have 10 4A lots, why would you do this? There would be no reason to do that, that I think it was designed, and the intent was flexibility to allow a piece of property to be developed, to give some more affordable housing, and that's why you have...
I don't think that was the intent.
You have building separation that reboots, and you have 1 acre that is required for each unit.
No, I think the intent is, if you wanted to build a multifamily development, you had to meet all those really strict requirements. They didn't want to advantage it, they wanted to discourage it.
Not to advantage it, but there's a reason that it's intended.
And I think it's to discourage the building of them.
No, zoning does not discourage affordable housing.
It zoning discourages you from putting a shed next to somebody's property. I think that's, it's to create those rules, to make sure that everything's broken up. That's just how, I can't see anything, and I know it's, and we work with people with variances and stuff all the time, and I think we would be willing to do that, but, like, I think the town really wants strict rules on multifamily developments. That's what I've seen in a lot of that stuff, and maybe I'm wrong, but I'm not seeing anything to the contrary.
Gordon, you had your hand up.
Mr. Chairman, if you had a parcel in town that had 110, 150 feet, we wouldn't be having this discussion. This parcel doesn't have the required frontage, that's why we're here. It doesn't have the required frontage. It should have been denied in the very beginning. I don't disagree. It should have been denied.
Yes, I agree with you, 100%.
I spoke out against it. You're going back to the original plan. Now it doesn't have a 30 foot buffer around the project on the opposite side. And you guys, this board, when it looked at the country court petition, came to the opinion that the road going into, the accessway going in, was a structure that needed to have a 30 foot buffer all the way around it. This one doesn't have a 30 foot buffer around it. I don't understand how you can approve this.
Rob?
Just to speak to the comments made, my recollection of the country court was, the fire chief was against it because they didn't have the proper road permissions that he was required. So that was one, that was one of the issues. If we talk about subdivision, okay, let's say for example, we get a subdivision, we have lot lines, individual homes, what are those lot lines for? It's a separation of individual ownership, because everybody owns a separate home. Okay, condominium is under one ownership, the land is common ownership, okay, that's part of the common household ownership in the deed, okay? The owner's only owning inside of the building, okay? So that's one thing for a lot of us. As far as the subdivision, you know, back in 2017, even Mr. Hudson, the subdivision approved, isn't required. Subdivision approval is not required. He says that, and you asked him a question, Mr. Stevens, Attorney Hudson, Hudson, the subdivision approval is required in specific instances. Mr. Hudson answers, "No."
Okay, thank you. Yes, go on, we'll finish up with this.
Mr. Hudson said that it would make this project a lot easier to approve if they could have subdivided. He also gave the opinion in the country court, that you had to subdivide each one of those blocks, so the building sat on subdivision. And then the developer said that they would need a variance in that requirement. So in all cases, it needs relief. It should have been straight up denied, I agree with you. That's what I said back in 2015.
Never should have got past the planning board. Never should have got past the planning board, but it did, all right?
But you can't, the law is that you can't, just because somebody made a mistake, doesn't mean you get to waive the zoning bylaws. You're not allowed to waive the zoning bylaws.
Right, but is there a way that it can be? A wrong was done, a wrong was done to both parties.
That's to that, to that.
All right, a wrong was done to both parties, okay? And there's got to be a remedy, there's got to be a remedy.
Yes, sir, your name, please?
Ed Johnson, trustee of the Biden Trust. You know, this has been a long, long, long process, project. I agree with the gentleman, I can't see what he...
It's Dan.
Dan.
Dan. That there was...